Hope that that records um what we're saying. I really pity anyone who's sitting at home at a computer listening to this, but hi, hi if you're. I'm waving at you, you can't see me waving at you, um, but I, good luck with this. Uh, okay. So, um, I'm gonna pull up this study wiki, which is the study guide. With possibly points that people have filled in. And if, if you haven't, like, when, when you actually study, you can download a blank copy of the study guide, which I would recommend. Um, so that you have something to look at, um, like, and so some of you may have heard me say this already, but. Kind of the way to study with this is, um, either we're like with flashcards or with a notebook or, or, uh. You know, with a, the blank copy of the study guide, have that and then have another, uh. Sheet, whatever it is with the answers on it, so if it's flashcards, it's usually on the, the answers on the other side. But you wanna try to actively come up with each point that you need to know and, and kind of say it. Um, to yourself out loud, uh, with, um, without looking at what the answer is. Cause actively trying to come up with it and then seeing if you're correct or not. Uh, helps you remember it better than when you just passively read through your notes. Um, you don't, you, you're not, when you're passively reading through notes, you, you're recognizing stuff. But you never have to kind of rehearse it and, uh, come up with the right answer. And that's what you're gonna have to do in the test, so you wanna always do that, have a, have a blank copy. And then, um, you know, keep a record of whether you got the correct answer or not. So I, I used to do this and, uh, if I got it correct three times in a row, then I would not rehearse it anymore. But if I, if I didn't have it three times in a row, I would keep working at it till I got it. Um, and then, uh, kinda other things to say are with study prep. Um, so, so there are points people have added that those are the, um, bolded stuff here. Um, but, uh, is, and so I'm repeating myself, some of you have already heard this, but. Um, you know, you, if you're having trouble with something, you, first of all, you can use acronyms. So, like, just an example, the, if you wanna remember the Great Lakes, which you don't need to know for this test. Um, H O M E S spells the Great Lakes, homes. So that's Huron, Ontario, um, Michigan, Erie and Superior. Okay, so you can do stuff like that with the, the test, uh, too. And the other thing you could do is visualize things, so, um, the example I always give, and a lot of you heard me give it more than once. But, um, somebody once told me they had a hard time remembering authoritative parents from authoritarian parents. And that the authoritative ones are the ones that are, in, in European American samples, kinda the good parents or whatever. And so she just pictured tater tots smiling and tha- and that was her way of just remembering that that's authoritative is the good one. It's an image and it works, it helps you remember better than just trying to rehearse it. Um, and so those, those are kinds of things that you can use that will help you remember. Um, now another thing that, like, when we go through the study guide. Uh, you know, let's say it was blank, um, maybe I'll open it. But the point about Native Americans and diversity, I'm not sure exactly what, what it says. Um, but the point you need to know for that is Native Americans often, uh. Don't like people to consider them as one group without realizing that there's a great deal of diversity. Within Native American culture, so there's many different tribes and many different cultural practices. And some tribes, you know, are, are more peaceful and some tribes emphasize power more. And some tribes are centered around women or women are the leaders and some tribes men are and so on. And, and so people don't, sometimes don't like to be grouped together. I always say, you know, and that's what I'm doing in, in this class is when I'm going through it, I'm considering Native Americans. And, and so is your, uh, text as one group. So people don't like that, it's important to remember that. Um, but the other piece of it is that, uh, Native Americans themselves do believe that in comparison to the broader culture. They have things in common that they share. Um, and so, you know, I, I talked about how, uh. Just different things, but in urban powwows, everybody from different tribes comes together and celebrates being Native American. Even though there are a lot of different specific cultural groups, but they're cele- celebrating their commonalities. Or, um, I talked about a, a doctor who lived in Milwaukee. Um, who was a physician in the mainstream healthcare system, but he was part of a Native American physicians group. Um, so, and, and that wasn't broken down by tribe, the, the idea is we have things in common as Native Americans. That set us apart from the mainstream, um, and let's meet each other and talk about those things. And about our commonalities that we have in terms of being physicians, being mainstream physicians. So commonalities, they, there is a sense of feeling commonality with other Native Americans from different tribes. As compared to the mainstream, so it's, it's all, there's always this tricky issue of like trying to remember diversity within a cultural group. Um, and, and realizing that, that Native Americans often don't like to be considered kind of as a uniform group. While still recognizing that Native Americans in this case have things in common with each other that are quite different from the mainstream. So, so I just said that without come, you know, looking at the wiki, of course, I've taught this course for a number of years, so. But then I'd look at my study guide and I'd see if I got it right and, uh. So that, the first part is there, I mean, if I were to add to this study guide, and one of you can, I would add the point here that. Um, uh, you know, yet there is still a sense of commonality with other Native Americans as compared to the mainstream. So you'd wanna see both of those things. Now, the idea is, okay, so you have that point that you already know you need to know in your head. And, um, then when you get to a test situation, so let's see. So if we look back at the, um, wiki for this. And it says, okay. Well, I, I remember that now, this one cropped it. Well, anyway, uh, so that didn't work. Um, but you, if you saw a question where it was talking about, um, I don't know, an example might be. Somebody's, uh, talking about a Native American says all Native Americans do X, Y or Z. Um, how would you respond? You already would have it in your head, well, uh, not all Native Americans do the same thing. Um, it's possible that they might do what this person does, um, but it's not necessarily the case that they would do that. And, and the idea is the more, the more you have the answer to the question in mind. Before you even read through the questions, the easier it is for you to find the correct answer. Hi, how are you? Um, and, and so that's another thing, like, uh, when you're going through these. Um, these questions, try to think of an answer without reading the responses. Cause people, often people who have difficulty with multiple choice tests, they kinda read the question and then. They don't try to come up with an answer and then they read and they try to figure out if the first one's correct. And then they try to read the second one and eventually, like, this one even isn't that many words. But that's a lot of information to try to keep in your head at once. And if you, if you just look at the question and you have a picture of what you want already, it's a lot easier. So th- this one, it's what values? Well, like if I did study it on my study guide, I know that there's two values where it's clear that Native Americans as compared to the mainstream. Value, um, harmony and collectivism or conservatism. So I'm looking for something that says that and right away I can see that this is the one. I don't have to do a lot of, like, mental work, um, I don't have to keep all that in my head. Cause I'm already looking for something specific, okay, so, uh, hi. Um, the, the more that you can, now, you're not always gonna be able to do that, but the more that you can. Um, the easier it typically will be. And then, uh, now this, this is pretty simple, but another thing is, um. Well, let's stick with the same one, there, there are two parters here. Harmony, egalitarianism, mastery, egalitarianism, conservatism, harmony, conservatism, mastery. Well, what I can see here is if, if I would know that this part. Mastery and harmony are different aspects of the same value, so probably I would, if I didn't know. I'd first try to, well, let's say I did know that harmony is what is emphasized and not mastery. Then, then I would go, I would either consider this one or this one. And then I might have to guess, but I would get harmony out of my head and just think about. Is egalitarian the thing that's emphasized or collectivism? And that's all I would be thinking about, and the idea again is the other part's redundant, both alternatives have that in the answer. And the more you can get out of your head and keep it simple, um, the better. So, so that's what I would do is now, maybe I'd have to guess or maybe I, I could think a bit about it. But I'd basically be choosing between collectivism or egalitarianism. And, uh, so, again, it's, right now, all I'm talking about is information management. And trying to keep it as simple as you can. Okay, um, so tho- those are kinda just some general, um, tips about studying. And actually like taking the, the test. Um, what else can I say about that? Like, like another thing to say is, and some of you probably do this. Uh, you have a lot of time to, um, to do these twenty questions. I remember taking the GRE, I don't know if you know what that is, some of you might, but it's a test where you gotta keep pushing and. Like if, if I wouldn't know an, an answer or I'd have questions about it, I'd just read it carefully. And then let it sit and move on to the next question. And sometimes just having the, like, reading the question and just moving on to another question, I don't know how it works. I mean, some part of your brain is working that's not, uh, conscious. But you might have, I don't know if you've ever had this, that you're, so you're working another question and then you go, oh yeah, or something like that. It's, it's like, uh, part of your brain somehow is still working at this question that you don't have an answer to. So sometimes it's, it's good if you don't really know the answer right away. It's good to just read the question carefully and then move on to another question, let, whatever it is that, that does that. Um, operate and, and come back to it later and you might have a, a better idea. Um, the idea is don't, don't just kind of stop at one question and take a long time if you don't have a good idea right at that time. So that, that's another tip, and some of you might already be doing it. Okay, so people have put a fair bit up on the study guide already, I'm kinda surprised about that, but that's good. Um, and then before I work my way through this, uh, I'll just ask you guys if you have any questions about any issues. That you'd like me to address, anything you found confusing or, um, you'd like some clarification, anything? Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna work through it and I'm gonna start, uh, here. Um, with unit eight and go to unit nine and then either tomorrow we'll do unit seven or we might get started on that here. Um, but in class tomorrow, what we're gonna do probably is just unit seven. Um, okay, so the basic points about the different approaches to studying subcultures within the USA. So there's culturally equivalent, um, deviant or deficit and variant. And without looking at the study guide, um, what can you, or your notes, try, try to come up. Even when you're starting studying, come up with some answer to what those three things are. So let's just start with the equivalent approach. See if you could do it without looking at your notes, I know you, it might not be easy. Um, and then look at your notes though when you feel like you've struggled enough. Um, what's the equivalent approach? Does anybody remember? Yeah. Yeah, all, all groups are, sorry, I interrupted you though, you were. Yeah, that's the idea is, is basically people are interchangeable regardless of their culture. Um, everybody's kinda the same. And so I showed you a study where it was on attachment, I think, and memory. Um, but they had like, and this is typical of a lot of research, it's not, it's not like they explicitly will say. We're using the culturally equivalent approach, but it, it's like that's what it, I, it would be defined at by people who talk about this. Because what it, what it does and what is very typical of, of, uh, a fair bit of, uh, developmental research. Is, um, in, in that study, I forget what it was, but it said something like, you know. We were looking at high school students and their recollect, yeah, and their attachment status and their recollection of. Uh, I don't, I don't know exactly what, different life events or something like that. Seventy-five percent of the sample is European American, uh, I don't know what exactly it was, but fifteen percent was African American. That adds up to ninety percent, seven percent was Latino or six percent, let's say, three percent Asian. And then the rest is other, and, and so they, they say that, but then they don't analyze whether, and they don't. Typically, they don't have large enough sample size of the, of the different cultures. Um, to look at whether these processes differ by culture. Now, there might be no reason to think that they would, um, but it, it's nice when you can do. Like if you could do that same study with representation of different cultures. Where you can statistically compare if the same process works in every group. Cause you don't, you don't really know until you do the research and when you sum across cultures like that. And seventy-five to eighty-five percent, it, it varies, but of your sample is European American. Basically, the findings that you get are gonna be, um, more or less driven by or, uh, reflecting. The European Americans in the sample because they're the hugest subgroup, you know, if they're seventy-five to eighty percent. What you're finding is really what's typical of European Americans. And, and it would be, you know, good if there, if you could do the research where you examined whether. The things you're describing actually work similarly in different cultural groups. So, yes, the equivalent approach basically considers people interchangeable and, and doesn't see culture as mattering. And the, and the way that happens in research is usually, cultures describe the cultural composition or the ethnic composition of the sample. But it's not analyzed and people are considered interchangeable. And the weakness of that approach is basically, we've seen that in, in our international section. That culture often does matter and that you can't assume that what you found for samples that are primarily European American. Are always gonna be the same across cultural groups. And, and so, um, that's the big, uh, difficulty with that approach is basically it ignores culture. And it ignores, uh, cultural differences. Uh, so. Yeah, and, and it ignores context, um, and one of the things is discrimination, but as they say here. But there's, there's a lot of different things that can influence, um, people from different cultural groups. That are contextual or situational. Um, but probably the biggest thing that is a problem with this approach is it doesn't even pay attention to culture. The next approach, the deficit approach, what does it do? Or what are some things that you can tell me it does? Does it acknowledge cultural differences? Yes, so the first thing, that's the first point, it acknowledges differences. But then it does some things that are, you know, we would think are not so great. And so what are some of the not so great things that it does, yeah, groups differ.
Do you think that mainstream methods are better than the cultural ones?
Yes, yeah, than the non-stream, mainstream ones, yeah. So, so it's, it's like cultures differ, but, but, um, the mainstream way of doing things is the best way of doing things. Or the way that people should do things, it's kind of the assumption, sometimes it's not that explicit. Um, and so it compares, it, it doesn't look within groups to see if there's variation within groups, like within any cultural group. It just compares everybody in one cultural group to the mainstream. And typically, but not always, we'll see, um, but typically it looks for problems. In the non-mainstream group, so deficit, and that's where the word deficit comes in. Deficit approaches often look for higher levels of poverty or, um, higher high school dropout rates. Or, uh, lower levels of income, maybe they're not looking at poverty or education. Those, those are two big things or income and education that are, that are often examined. But also, also like, um, rates of delinquency or, um, I don't know, things like that anyway. It's looking for problems and it, it, it looks, it, it often kind of assumes that people that are, are not doing things. The way the mainstream does it are gonna have more problems. And when it finds problems, it says the reason, and this is important. The reason that this cultural group is having problems, whatever it is, high, high school dropout rates or lower levels of income. Is cause they're not, they don't have mainstream values and they're not doing things the way that people in the mainstream does, do. Hi. Um, and so the solution is become like the mainstream, which is assimilation. It's like lose your, the values from your culture of origin and take on the values of the mainstream. And if you do that, the idea is if, if people in this group do that, then the problems will disappear. So I'm not sure what it says there, but it probably says all that. Um. Yep, yeah, so I was telling people at a, I was at a conference where a guy was basically saying this, people in this, I think it was Latinos. They don't engage in authoritative parenting and that's why their kids don't do so well at school. And, and I was saying he got booed, um, at the conference, but, and the reason is he's just kinda like blaming it on people in the group. And, and saying, you know, if they just change that, um, then everything will be okay. So, and what are some problems with this approach? There's a couple of problems, I don't know if, if they have those down there, but, and I shouldn't peek. Um, cause let's try to come up with the answer to that, what are some problems of thinking that way? Yeah. Yeah, so a big, a big thing here that's a problem is, is they're not, they're ignoring context just generally. And, and that's what you mean by other factors that might be affecting the group, I assume, right? Yeah, and, and so there, you know, if it's, you know, if you tell people in a group, just do this, be more authoritative. Let's say you're doing that and that's your advice to Latinos. And that's gonna solve your, the rates of high school dropout. Um, well, you know, it's not that simple and when we get to the Latino section, we'll see. Um, that, you know, a lot of people immigrate from Mexico for economic reasons. People who are well off don't tend to come into the US as much as people who are not well off. And a lot of times, there's just economic concerns, there's language difficulties that make it hard to get high paying jobs. So people have to do a lot of work for very little money and the reason kids are dropping out or whatever is typically. So that they can work to help their family out. While telling people just parent more authoritatively ignores all that. And, and you can't, you can't really effectively help people if you're not thinking of the situations that they're living in. So that's a big problem is it ignores contextual factors and it ignores discrimination, that's, that's a contextual factor. It's not the, it's not the only contextual factor, but discrimination in, in our, the African American section. We're drawing attention to this particular contextual factor, um, but there are many contextual factors. We're gonna kind of look at, um, as we go through the term. Um, but the other thing that it is doing is it's considering everybody in one cultural gr- group to be more or less the same. And it's ignoring variation within the group. So the idea is some people who are, like if I'm talking about Latinos, well, actually some Latinos are doing pretty well in terms of education. Uh, and, you know, maybe it would be good, some people say, to look at. What, what are characteristics of Latino families where their kids don't drop out? That tend to occur, because if we, the idea is that if we wanna help people in a particular group. We wanna look at examples of success within that group. And in the Latino section, we'll talk about how, um, there's this value called familiesmo, um, or familyism. Um, and this seems to be associated in that group with, uh, uh, higher academic achievement anyway. And, and so, and that's not something you would. And and so and that's not something you would necessarily think of if you're just comparing the group to the mainstream. So it's important to look within groups to see uh what successful people are doing. And this approach doesn't do that either. Uh and then what is the variant approach and what does it do? Hi, and hi. You just came in, so you guys are not on the hot seat, but everybody else is. What does the variant approach do? What does it argue? How does it improve over the deficit approach? Yeah, so one big thing is it's not saying there is one way that people need to behave to be successful. It it says cultures vary in terms of how they achieve success. And what works for typically works for people in the mainstream isn't necessarily gonna work for people of different cultures. So another way of saying is every every cultural group or people in every culture group have their own unique ways of achieving success. Even even within a cultural group, there's probably more than one way of going about being successful. But the the variant approach is is more uh understanding of that idea. So that's a big deal. And what's the other improvement that it makes? It's related to something you said, I don't know your name, what's your name? Taylor. It's related to something you said, remember?
Did you call me?
No, are you Taylor too?
Yeah, my name's also Taylor, I'm sorry, I was like, what?
Taylor meet Taylor. Remember what you said about, yeah?
Sounds like the opposite.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. These these guys do think about context a lot. And so that's a big deal. Um and we'll see in the African-American section, that's where discrimination is emphasized. I mean, it's not just discrimination that is discussed, um but that's what we're focusing on in this section. But, you know, with Latino families, like I said, they they consider the context of those families. And so two big strengths of the variant approach are that it it looks at variation within groups and it doesn't think there's one way to achieve success. And the other is that it pays attention to context, okay? Those are kind of the two things you need to know, okay? That are that are, that that build on the deficit approach. At least the deficit approach acknowledges cultural differences, that builds on the equivalent approach. But the variant approach builds on the deficit by paying attention to context and looking at variation within a group and looking for strengths within that group. And and like it says here, I I wore my wrong glasses today, so sorry about taking them. Well, I'm sure you don't care if I take my glasses off or not, anyway. Um, so it, now, the deficit approach does kind of attend to these two issues. Um but but so and so does the variant, they both kind of acknowledge that people inherit values from their culture of origin, now they think about them very differently. The deficit approach sees that as potentially being a problem where the variant approach does not. And and they also um acknowledge that historically, different groups have had different experiences within the US, um and that's true both for Native Americans and African-Americans and we'll see that in in the future as well. But the big thing here is the variant approach really pays attention to contextual influences happening now and the ver- the deficit approach doesn't do that. And um, you know, discrimination is one situational factor, but we're gonna be looking at migrational patterns, contextual uh issues having to do with political situations in the country of origin and stuff, just all sorts of different situational things. And and the variant approach is the one who that it that, you know, kind of says, look, groups aren't just different because of their values, they're, especially in the USA, they're different because of different forces that are are happening, situational forces that are happening that affect those families. And so, yeah, the big thing here is the deficit approach al- always its its way of helping people is by saying, if if you're not doing so well, it's because you don't have mainstream values and the solution is to change your values and then everything's gonna be okay. The variant approach is more likely to s- to say two things. First of all, let's look at what's going on in your context and whether there's things that we can do that would would help in in terms of whatever situational forces there are. And also, let's think about um uh unique ways that people within an- any cultural group might have it of achieving success, because there's more than one way to achieve success and and perhaps people in different cultural groups have different ways of achieving success. So that that's kind of the summary of the points. Are there any questions about those ways of thinking and how they're different and what their strengths and weaknesses are? Because you wanna have that down. Um, and we'll we'll be looking at it in African-American families in a minute. Okay, okay, let's just ask this, we probably can answer this. Why is it important to examine variation within a given group?
Solutions to problems?
Yeah, that's the right path and so you and you wanna be, if if I ask you that question, that could be a multiple choice question in the test. You wanna be ha- already have your mind looking for something about, well, you know, more, you can help people more effectively if you know who who's succeeding and who's not succeeding within that group. And um, you know, so in other words, if looking for examples of success within the group can be a good way of of helping people and you you need to acknowledge variation within the group in order to do that. So that that's probably what this says. Well, it's also, it's also saying, you know, that's not really what I would argue though. Um, for this, this is, what they're saying is true, but I don't know how much it applies to that point. The the point, the answer to is more what you're saying, which is um that if you're gonna help people, it helps to know how people in that group are achieving success. And you can't do that without looking at variation within the group. Okay, know why it's important to consider the contextual forces. Now, now here is where the, what they say might be important, that influence a given culture group. And so why is it important to look at contextual influences? You look like you wanna talk. No, okay, I'm wrong, I'm projecting, which is a psychological term for thinking something, that you're thinking something that you're not thinking, I'm thinking. Why why would you wanna uh think about situational factors? I I haven't read it, so, and you you shouldn't either. I mean, I I would look at it after I try to come up with the answer. Okay, well, fair enough. Uh, where are we? Honestly, I don't really know. Except I I know, I know, like, this is a mistake that that many people make now. Um, that in and and uh, I I did give an example, but not of a black woman here. If you see somebody, so I had this happen to me, where, but there there's research that shows this. Uh. I'm not, but I'm not gonna go there right now because that's not, that's not the answer to this point. Yeah, don't, it's not the answer. So you can go on the Wiki and delete it and get a point for it. And I would, um please, somebody do that. Do it now, yeah. Yeah, it would. Yeah. That's part of it. And and the other one is like what we were saying for the for other point, which is if you wanna help people effectively, it's important to know what their context is. If if you're saying, like, let's let's say, you know, in this example I was giving with Latino families, if you're saying, you know, just value in education, then you won't have problems. And you're ignoring like the fact that people can't speak English typically and um they're working a lot, and we'll talk about this when we do the Latino section, that jobs that pay very little. Um, if you don't even think about that, you can't really help the families. And saying, you know, just make an edu- education a priority, isn't really gonna help them deal with the situation they find themselves in.
It's kind of always like a case in court, you gotta hear both sides.
Right.
It's like, you know, like, going to jail or, you know, going to jail and early age versus like staying in school.
Right, yeah. Yeah, and so and so the big, like, it helps to understand people too, that's a good point.
On the one side, it could be that they have like that upbringing, the other side, they just couldn't afford to.
Right, yeah. Yeah, and and so, and that for the test, what you need to know here, just to kind of hit it home is um to to help people and to recommend, to give good recommendations about what to do, you also need to know their context. You can't really help people if you don't know that. So, so both of those have similar, for different reasons, similar kind of answers. Okay. Now, now we're talking and we're getting to the part in the video, which is um has to do with what kind of historical stuff. And uh, with, I don't, let's see if this is right. Um. Yeah, that's that's more or less what is said about pre uh emancipation or slavery, families in slavery, is that um people from Africa, even even today, um there tends to be an emphasis on more traditional gender roles where males are the protector and provider. I mean, these are stereotypes and they do not always work. Um but generally, this is the case and females focus on domestic uh activity and relationships within the family. Um now, ju- in times of slavery, females could still play their roles, but the idea is males had a hard time being protectors and providers in that system. And so often what is said happened is that males shifted what they did and uh provided emotional support and also helped out with domestic um activities in times of slavery. Post-emancipation, um nothing's up there. Um, kind of what I said there was that uh people, people, m- many people were in the southeast a- after emancipation, not everyone. Um, and then uh there was a lot of lynching and just uh and really harsh segregation. And so people migrated to the northeast to try to escape that. And it's possible that that they escaped some very extreme forms of um discrimination and racism. But even in the northeast, uh men had a hard time getting jobs because of discrimination or the fact that, you know, in in predominantly white areas, males were the providers and and African-American males were seen as competing for um work with with those males. And so even in the northeast, uh often women, it was easier for women to get employment as domestic help. And so even in the the northeast, where you would think that there wasn't discrimination, there was and it influenced families so that um now men, men, it's not like no men found jobs. Many men had paid work, um but uh there was more flexibility, is the idea, in terms of gender roles. And um both men and women would help out with domestic work and with paid labor. Um so that that's the idea behind post-emancipation families and gender roles. Do you remember which families formed the basis of the um early post-emancipation African-American middle class? Does anybody remember? There's two groups you need to know for the term test. Okay, well, uh I'm just gonna say it. Um, one group is, there there were people of African origin who uh were in the US and were not slaves and had legal rights. And so they were able to get established financially in a way that people in slave families could not. And and I said like uh two two sources, two big sources of those people who who were not slaves. One is there were people freed by their slave owners and who then had legal rights, that sometimes happened. And the other is indentured servants. I don't know if you remember that, but um there were people of many different origins, but some were of African origin, who would who would become what's called an indentured servant. And and that, the typical way that worked is somebody would, you you would sign an agreement. Um and the indentured part is it's got a wax seal on it that kind of signifies it's official. Um but basically, it would say something like, I, the person in the USA, agree to pay for your um boat ride over and for your room and board for a period of four or seven years. And you in turn ag- agree, or or I in turn agree, to work for you for four or seven years. Um then after that period has expired, then the agreement is terminated and the person who did the work is free to leave. Um so basically, you agree to uh to be this servant for a specified period of time um as a way of coming over to a new country. Um and so, now, sometimes that was abused, but there often, it was not abused and and so once the four or seven-year term was over, whatever it was, people were then free to leave and do as they as they wished, so they had legal rights. And so those those two, people who were freed as slaves and people who came over as indentured servants were the um Were the, um, two main sources of, uh, the early African American middle class. Both groups were able to establish themselves prior to slavery being abolished. Basic point about trends in poverty rate over the past forty years is that for African Americans, they've declined. That's the main thing you need to know. Um, I mean, you can still make comparisons to the mainstream and then they are higher. Um, but they, over the past forty years, they've declined. I wish I could just say, be quiet. Okay. Okay, and then, then we get to start, like prior to talking about, um. The deficit and variant approaches to poverty rates in African American families. Because they are higher than in, um, the, the mainstream and so this is. Uh, a di- kind of a, an issue that people argue over. And again, there's deficit and variant approaches to this. Um, but before we did that, there were some points that I wanted to make, um, and one of them is. Like I, I had a number of points here, but focusing on. Like it's not like we wanna ignore higher poverty rates, but focusing on that ignores successes. And so that, that's an issue, again, it's a, more generally, it's a. Problem of the deficit approach. Um, fo- focusing on negatives and comparing one whole group to another whole group. And ignoring successes, so that's a problem. The other thing I I was saying here is that. Like the deficit approach talks about high rates of single female families as being the cause of higher rates of poverty. Now, we we will talk about that in a minute, but prior to even talking about it, I, at the, here I said. You know, not all single female families are impoverished. And not all impoverished African American families are single female. And so we wanna keep that in mind when we work our way through these people's arguments that. Like, a lot of the times it's like they get equated, but they're. They're not, they're se- separate issues and just because somebody's single female. In a single female situation, that doesn't mean that their situation is necessarily a bad one. It may be, it might, might not be. And just because a family's impoverished, that doesn't mean that there's not a, a male and a female in it, there might be, there might not be. And then, then I also talked about how, uh. You know, e- even when there are single female families. We ta- in the very part, we get back at this point. Extended family and, uh, religious, uh, groups or church groups are very important sources of support. That that may help protect, um, single female families so that, um. You know, poverty or economic disadvantages. Uh, le- possibly less of an issue, so we wanna keep those things in mind. Then, then we move to talking about, uh, Wilkinson and how she kinda says. Yes, there are twenty percent of African Americans, um, live in conditions of poverty. But eighty percent of families don't and, uh, let's try to keep that in mind and. And she describes. Upper class, middle class and working class African American families that are not impoverished. So part of what she's doing is saying, you know, there's a lot of different kinds of families, not just impoverished families. And and she talks about the unique qualities that these different classes have, but I, I'm not requiring you to know that. For the term test, but what she says that I would like you to know is that. Typically, not always, but typically in these families, there are two parents of, a father and a mother. Now, it's not always the case, but typically there are. Families do things together, so customs promoting cohesion. Even like something as simple as having a family meal where everybody gets together or maybe doing that on Sundays or whatever the practice is. Or maybe having some other form ritual, um, that you do as a family. These things promote a feeling of togetherness and typically, not always, but typically. Um, families in these different classes do have that. Typically, not always, the father is employed. Typically, there's an emphasis on achieving in educational settings. Typically, there's smaller numbers of children, two or three children, I think is what she says. And typically mothers say they really like being a, a mother. So that's what you should know, it's a big list there. Here, here you might have some kinda image that you create that has all these pieces in it and that might help you. Are there any questions about that? Okay. Okay, and then we get to Moynihan and he, he is a deficit, just so you know, person or a. He wouldn't describe, it's not like he, he had a T-shirt that said, I'm a deficit researcher, but he was a politician who. Other people say this is a very deficit way of thinking. And, um. Now, you know, at least he starts out with something contextual, but it's still deficit approach. His line, his chain, and you should know this chain of events. I'm not, I think this is correct. It starts with slavery and and we, we talked about how there is some truth to that, that that led to different gender roles. But we haven't said that those gender roles are, are a problem and he says that they are. He says that females became too assertive and strong in these families and that males became marginalized. And felt like they didn't have any role to play that contributed to family life. And, um, because of this, males often would not be invested in the family as much. And that led to instability. Which, which led to higher rates of single female families. And as a result of there not being two adults providing for children, that leads to poverty. But the, the big thing that makes this a deficit approach is his, his solution is change your values. And that's a deficit approach. The problem now, he says, is people don't, in African American families, don't have. I'm putting words in his mouth, but, uh, gender roles that are like the mainstream. And the solution, the thing that would really help these families out is to have more mainstream family values. You can hear people today saying that. Sometimes they won't talk about African American families, they'll just talk about poverty rates, but they'll, they'll say, you know. We gotta emphasize family values and family togetherness and that's how we fight poverty. And and that's a deficit way of thinking, whether it's talking about racial groups or social classes. So, anyway, this, what, what does this approach resemble? It's a deficit approach. And this, this is not a study guide point, this is a, um, point that somebody made, it's a deficit approach because. The values, inner values that people have are considered to be the problem. There are depart, the values are a departure from mainstream values and the solution is to change the values and become like mainstream. What are some problems with the argument? Well, first of all, I think the most important thing is it ignores contextual influences. It, it's, it seems pretty. Misguided to tell people in poverty. And again, like so, so sometimes people just talk about poverty and not race. But just change your values and then everything's gonna be better. That, that is ignoring people's context, right? And, and it seems a bit problematic. And specifically with African American families, one, one contextual factor that we, we talk about is discrimination. It's ignoring discrimination. And that is a contextual factor that. Needs to be considered. The other problem with the argument is more maybe nitpicky, but there's this guy, I think his name is Gutman. Who said, if you're right, Moynihan. Uh, that gender roles were causing people to split up. That should have happened as soon as emancipation existed, as soon as slavery ended. So when people were legally a- able to marry, if it's the values that come out of slavery that are causing people to. Split up, you should, you should have seen that in the late eighteen sixties. This, this person, I think most of the data, it's historical data they gathered, but they gathered it in the early nineteen hundreds. And I don't know if you remember this or not, but I'll just ask you, what do you think the predominant family type for African Americans was? In the early nineteen hundreds? Was it single female? No. It was nuclear, yeah. Um, divorce rates were very similar for African Americans and whites, which is basically zero. I mean, really, the way he puts it is ninety-nine to, I think for one group it's ninety-nine, the other it's ninety-eight percent were nuclear. Um, so, that, that, that's a problem too, if, if his argument is right. You should be seeing different, um, things happening historically and you're not. It's more like this is something that's happening now. And and that suggests that it's more than just a, a problem that came out of history. I mean, yes, there's a historical aspect to it, but it's like, let's think about things that are happening now as well. In people's context. And so then when we moved, are, so are there any questions about Moynihan's? Arguments, he's, he's deficit, the big reason he's deficit is he compares African American families to the mainstream. And he sees, it's true, he acknowledges history and slavery, but he sees the problems. As being rooted in non-mainstream gender roles and the solution is to become more like the mainstream. And that's all a deficit way of thinking. And it's ignore, a big, so a big problem here is it's ignoring contextual factors, it's ignoring discrimination. But this other one, I could ask you, what was the typical family structure of African American families? In the nineteen hundreds or after emancipation, something like that, and then, and the answer is. Pretty much nuclear. So, now we move to the variant approach. And the person that, that I referred to, like this, this work was done, so Moynihan. Though politically, he operated, he was a senator and his ideas. And and he was active until the nineties. And, uh, his, his idea is not just him now. I kinda using him as a representative of a lot of different people. But it, there, uh, what I did say is, in the Clinton era, there were welfare reforms that took place. Were, they were in, they were kinda influenced by Moynihan. And and one of the things that happened is states that were able to reduce. Rates of single female families without increasing abortion rates were given more money. And and that, that thinking came out of Moynihan and people like him who have. This deficit way of thinking, if you just reduce rates of single female families. Then problems will cease to exist. But anyway, stack, you know, this, this variant approach was a- active in the seventies. Here we are. And she, she's one person who, um. Not the only person, but a, a person to point to as taking a contrary position. And and see, uh, right away, this is the chain of events here where. It's rooted, her starting point is what's happening now and and she's saying discrimination still exists and still is affecting people. It's lo- not like there are no opportunities for people of African background. But it is like discrimination makes things a bit harder and it creates higher poverty rates than otherwise would be the case. Um, and so the other kinda big thing to notice that's different. Is Moynihan kinda points to family structure and instability as causing poverty. Where these people say poverty actually causes. Um, higher of single female family rates and more marital instability. And so the direction of these, of effect is completely different for these two approaches. The variant approach sees discrimination hap- resulting from poverty and then that influencing family structure. So you should know, you should know that. Okay, and then, then like points that I made in support of this argument. I'm not sure if I'll ask this on the test or not, but on the quiz I did, I showed you a study, right? Where they, um, sent resumes out to people who were advertising for jobs. In Boston and Chicago, does anybody remember that study? They sent those resumes out? Yeah, so what these guys did, the researchers, is they created a bunch of fictional resumes that might be appropriate for all the different jobs that are offered. And then they also, uh, looked at birth records and what, and names of African Americans and. And European Americans and they got people to rate, how typical are these? Uh, the names, how, I don't know what the wording was, but. Um, when you see this name, they asked a number of questions about it actually, but one of them was, is this. Typically an African American sounding name or a European American sounding name? And and for some names of people said, I don't know, um, and they, they didn't use those names, but, but some names. Uh, were quite strongly associated with one group versus the other group. And, uh, so they prepared these resumes. And then for each different resume, they had two names on the. Like in one version, they had a white sounding name and another version, an African American. like in one version they had a white sounding name and another version an African American sounding name. And they, they had, they put phone numbers on there that actually the researchers had and email addresses on that the researchers had to just look at callback rates. So off, how often, when people see these resumes, do they call and say, we'd be interested in having you in for an interview or something like that? And you were saying what they found? Yeah, like, first of all, callback rates were not high, they were like ten percent or nine percent for European Americans. I mean, I'm, I'm kinda generalizing it. But uh, they were still, for every three white callbacks, there were only two callbacks for African American names. And it's pretty hard to argue that, like, like what I was saying is, in, in the past, research, researchers would hire people to go look for a job. Or like a, a white person and an African American person. Or um, apply for housing, like, like uh, things like this. And there, there's evidence of discrimination in, in that research, but a criticism of it always was, well, these people who are doing the testing, they know what the hypothesis is. And so maybe they're behaving in subtle ways that are influencing how people respond to them. Well, it's pretty hard to argue that a name on a piece of paper is evoking, like is purposely doing anything to anybody. And, and so it's a very convincing and methodically rigorous study and, and a recent study that shows, you know, there's still discrimination. Um, you know, it's, it's great that African Americans are getting callbacks and it, it is like if you keep working at it, um, you know, you can get somewhere, but it's still like there are unequal opportunities and this is gonna affect people financially. So there's, there's evidence that way for the first link. There's also evidence that what I said about this, that, that poverty or economics cause uh instability and, and people to break up. And, and that evidence I was saying was just the study where they were looking at marital relationships in a small town in Iowa, most of the people were not African American somewhere. But, but in this town, it was like a one uh employer town, pretty much. Where, you know, like the, here in Columbia, there's, there's not a lot of employers. University of Missouri is a big one, there's a healthcare industry and there's insurance. Of course, there's other jobs, but there's, so it's kind of like three big uh lines of employment. But in smaller towns, it's like you might have one major employer. And in the middle of this study, the employer shut down. And so all of a sudden, a bunch of people lost their jobs. Well, what happened? People got stressed out and they started having problems in their marriage and splitting up. And so it's, it's a study where you can see clearly that financial stress does lead to instability and di, ultimately different family structures. And so, so there's, pretty much the idea is there's research that shows that this chain of events happens or that it's logical.
Bye-bye.
Uh, and uh, now the other thing that's not here is, they say that um, but they emphasize, variant approaches often emphasize strengths. And they say, you know, single female families with a strong kin network are an adaptive response to racism. It's like um, people rely on their kin and, and that's a source of strength. And we looked at a study where um, they didn't, they didn't measure directly extended kin networks, but where, what we saw in that study is, um, they looked at single female and two parent families and European American couples and African American couples with kids. The kids were ten to fourteen. And in the European American families, um, kids of single female parents had higher delinquency rates and lower math scores. But in the African American families, the kids were doing just as well regardless of what family type they were in. And, and these guys say, it may be because of what Stack's saying, that um, for African Americans, um, uh, because of having to deal with racism, many people have learned to rely on extended kin networks. And so there's, there's less of an impact. And then, but then we say, you know, but that, that doesn't mean there's no problem, right? Cause this starts with discrimination and that's not a, a just um, thing to be happening. So we, even, even though this may be, you know, positive in that people have learned to um, adapt to discriminations, we would like to end discrimination. Okay, then let's look at the different, so Anthony James talks about these different types of racism. There's in, individual racism, institutional racism can be contrasted with individual racism. Uh, silent racism, and you need to keep that distinct from uh implicit racism, which you also need to know about. And internalized racism are the four that he talks about. So let's start with individual racism or discrimination, what is that? Yeah, it, it's discrimination that an individual may have. So we're ta, individual means we're talking about specific people. And that can be contrasted with institutional racism. And what is institutional racism? Yeah, it's like it, it, it often is practiced by individuals, but they're in institutional positions that put them in authority and affect a lot of other people. So we've seen in the last couple of years, lots of examples of this with members of the police force. And the idea is, you know, not every police person, what do you say? That's not gendered, police officer. Oh boy, I need a rest. Um, not every police officer is necessarily, if, let's say they're uh of European background, not everyone is racist, but the idea is if, if they are, they're in a position where they can negatively affect a lot of people. And uh, and what Anthony kinda says is, you know, anybody can be racist, but because uh, white people tend, it's not like this is always the case, obviously, but they tend to be more in positions of power, institutional power, or overrepresented might be a better way of saying it. That means that people of visible minority groups get negatively affected by that more than uh, by institutional racism than um, European Americans do. And I, I gave you the example, so there's a link on the website to a government case, it was a while ago now. But uh, against Target, now it's a specific target in Walmart where the manager um, was instructing people to rip up African American sounding, applications with African American sounding names. So it's very much like the research that we talked about, but here it's happening in real life. And that's institutional racism. Yes, it's practiced by an individual, but they're in an institutional position that makes them affect more than just the people they inter, interact with as individuals. Do you remember what we said about silent racism? Yeah? You guys want me to quiz? Now you're looking like you wanna talk, am I wrong? Okay. That's part of it, but that, that's getting a bit too close in my mind to in, implicit racism. So we wanna, and so it's, thank you for saying that, but we want, we wanna make sure that we know how silent racism and implicit racism are different. Yeah. Uh, well, you could think about it though, is, is the thing I wanna say here. And so, and you, you're right, often it can be even just like well-meaning, like you're, you're being friendly. But the idea is that uh, you could be conscious of this and it could be even a negative thing. Um, but the big deal is you're not saying anything explicit. You're just doing stuff that convey certain attitudes without saying anything. So that's why it's silent, cause you're not talking. And, and like the example I gave here is of Barack Obama's grandmother who, who's white. And uh, he talks about it, how, you know, three African American adolescents that were approaching them and she drags him across the street. She's conveying to those boys ideas about them, that they can't be trusted on the basis of their appearance, which is silent racism. Now, she may be, well be aware of her racist attitudes. And it may be well-meaning or not well-meaning, but the big deal here is nothing explicit is said. Now Anthony, maybe you were watching the video where he, he gave an example of someone who was well-meaning and was his army supervisor. So is that where you're getting that from? Is from the video? Okay, yeah. So he gives an example of, like he, he was in the army and he was doing racial sensitivity training, like he was a leader that taught this. Um, but his um supervisor, who was a good friend, said, you might wanna watch the books you read, cause Anthony was reading books by African American authors. And it's kinda, Anthony thought, would you say that if I was, if I was white and you were black, would you tell me you might wanna watch the authors you're reading? I, I mean, it's like it's well-intended, but it's like it's saying something kinda stereotype that it, you know, is dehumanizing or, or something like that. So, but, but again, it's not like the guy said anything explicit about race. It's get, it's getting close to it there though. Um, but he does give that as an example of silent racism. And then internalized racism, what's that? Yeah, people internalize the negative ideas other people have toward themselves. Um, so uh, and anything like that. I mean, the, the example that, that he gave is, I think in the video as well, uh, of his nephew where he asked his nephew what his plans for college were and his nephew said, people like me don't go to college. And Anthony said, what do you mean, people like me? And um, his nephew said, you know, black people. And it's, it's kinda like he has a negative idea of, of what uh, black people do, even though Anthony's black himself and was in a PhD program at the time. So somehow this, his nephew had, had negative ideas about a ri, the race that he belonged to and that, that were internalized from outside is the idea and applied um, to his own race. Bless you. Uh, okay, now what's implicit racism? That, that's the big thing here, automatic and unconscious, okay? Um, so usually that means it will also be silent, but just remember that silent racism, you could be well aware and conscious of your negative attitudes. But the idea is, if you're expressing them in behavior but not by saying anything, it's silent. Where, where implicit is, you don't even know you have the negative attitudes. And we just did a thing on Wednesday, you may have seen it, where we looked at reaction times and so on. And there's a link on the PowerPoint slides, that's, that's where I have all the links where you can take that or any other test of implicit bias if you're interested in it. But the big deal here is uh, you wanna, uh, we should all be aware that we may have negative attitudes of, about other people. Now that implicit side is more than just race, I forget what all it has, weight. Um, let's just look at it. And I, I think that point is important too, like we're always making assumptions, gender is a big thing that we're always doing that. And we just need to know, we, we could be making, you know, negative assumptions about other people. I mean, based on their appearance and we wanna make sure that we're conscious of it and that we deal with it thoughtfully. And so here, here they have like uh, a list of all sorts of un, even presidents. Uh, people who are disabled. Anyway, you could, you could look at that and, I don't know, take it for what it's worth, but I think it's a, it's a useful thing to be conscious. You know what, what I think it would be? I, I don't really know, but it would, it says Barack Obama and one or more previous presidents, so I don't really know. Um, cause you could, in the past, I've seen this with Republican and Democrat presidents. Uh, I don't know, um, but this one seems to be geared toward, do you have a negative bias toward Barack Obama versus other presidents? That's what I'm getting from just reading the description. But I, and I don't think they have, but I've seen it where it's like Democrat versus Republican. The idea is, do you have things, negative things floating around in your mind that you don't know you have for one or the other group? Did I answer everything you were asking or, okay?
Um, okay, then we get to the section on um, yeah. And the, what, what points did we say there?
Kind of a big thing, it's important to know the no-nonsense parenting. So what's no-nonsense parenting? Uh-huh. So that's part of it, so strict, yeah. But there's another part, strict and Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's not out of control angry is the idea. Um, and so it's you gotta do what I say, yeah, that's part of it. But the other part is, that I love you or something, I mean, not simplistic, but something like that. Anyway, these, these guy, Brody, there's this researcher named Brody and Flor who said, you know, this is a strength of African American families and a, and a way that success is promoted. And we, I think we just talked And we, I think we just talked about this on Wednesday. What, what did we say that no-nonsense parenting was associated with? Yeah, yeah. Were you the one in class that said you were, you were pretty much on when you described what self-regulation is? Or was that somebody else? Um, but, uh, maybe it was you, was it you? Yeah, okay. Um, sorry about that. But it was neat that you, you got there, cause, uh, I, and I don't know what you said, but like, and it, and it's always measured differently, but I know on their measure, it was like, can they stay focused on the goals that they have? Let's see, did they plan ahead, uh, and do they stick to that plan? I should be able to do more than that, uh, cause they ask teachers these questions, a bunch of questions about self-regulation, but they were all kind of about having goals, sticking to them, not being able to regulate their emotions, stay focused, things like this. And no-nonsense parenting, how is that associated with self-regulation? Yeah, it was positively associated with it. So parents who were strict but warm, had kids who were better at staying on task and not getting distracted. And then, and then, I don't know if this will be on the test or not, that in turn led to them doing better at school and, you know, not being as depressed and having better social relationships and stuff. Um, and so, uh, you know, this is a strength, but the, the idea here is it's, it, it, it's a kind of parenting that's not typical for European-Americans, but for African-Americans tends to be associated, um, with more positive outcomes. And, and we also talked about just generally like how strict parenting, um, might be done with less emotional negativity, at least some of the time. We said that especially if you're in a high-risk situation, that kind of parenting can be protective of kids. And we also mentioned this study, it does not find that corporal punishment leads to better outcomes. But what it did find is that for European-Americans, corporal punishment was associated with externalizing problems in kids. So the kids are more aggressive if their parents spanked them. But for African-Americans, there was just not much of an association. And the, the authors of that particular study said, it could be, again, that people are being strict, in this case spanking, but not being really angry in the way that they're dealing it. But I, I mean, I would, and Anthony says this too, like, that doesn't mean you should spank. Um, cause there's not much, re, research in general doesn't show at least anything good other than kids doing what you want them to do right now. But it, it doesn't lead to them anything long-term that's positive. So strengths, we, we talked about diversity, how, um, uh, you know, often we think of people of African background and fa, families of African background as being descended from slaves and obviously they're, they're, that is one source of people, of many people's African background. But African, people of, families of African background, you know, maybe one person is, is from, mo, mostly has in their family, uh, um, kind of a background that comes from slavery, but the other parent is a recent immigrant from Africa. Or what I said, uh, like there used to be a guy in our department where he was from Jamaica and his wife was from South Carolina. And so there are, there's lots of diversity and, and, uh, the Caribbean and, and South, South America and, um, European countries are sources of, and Africa. Um, immigrating from Africa now are sources of that diversity. So it's important to keep that in mind. Um, it's kind of like what we were talking about with Native American families. Um, where there's a lot more diversity than, than we think when we talk about African-Americans as kind of one cultural group. And another thing that's sad, like, people, people, like, so a writer named Hill, who was kind of of Stacks' time, he said, you know, Moynihan, you talk about gender roles as being bad, but really they're not, they're, they're a strength. Instead of saying females have too, are too assertive and males not invested, you could say these relationships are more egalitarian and more flexible. And, and you, so you could look at this in a totally different way. And, and that's the way we're looking at it. And, um, these kinds of gender roles are at the forefront of where gender roles in general are moving in society. And so, again, this, this is, or can be a strength, not a, not a problem or a weakness. Collectivism isn't mentioned, but all, all I said there is that's an important source of strength. We mentioned that with extended family networks. But al, also, there's more of a sense of, you know, helping each other out. But what I did say, and this is important, is that it's not a collectivism like you might see in people who are of Asian origin. It's, it's a collectivism that has existed in a, in a US context for a long time. And the mainstream, you know, values of assertiveness and the idea is in, in the fight for emancipation and in the civil rights movement, people have had to learn to be assertive. And so it's, there's a collectivism, yes, but it's combined with assertiveness in a way that you, you don't see in the stereotypical collectivist countries that are of East Asian origin. I feel a bit goofy saying that, but anyway, that, that's what is said. And, and religion, well, we talked about that when we talked about poverty. This is, oh, and the stat I gave in the strengths section was, this is a simple question, does religion play, religion plays an important role in my life, agree or disagree? Eighty-two percent of African-Americans agree with that statement. I think in this study, fifty-three percent of European-Americans did. And, and so, it's just an example, it's not to say that religion doesn't play a strong role in non-African-American strength families, but it, it typically plays more of a, a strong role. And it's not like every, I don't know what I just said. It's not like every African-American family uses religion or, or has it as a source of strength, or every European-American doesn't, but it's like there are different percentages of families and it tends to be a pattern that there's, and more often is a strength for African-American families. Okay, and for this, I just need you to know names, that's it. So, uh, I, I said, but you should know, I don't, I missed this point. Oh, the point's about confronting discrimination when raising children. Well, I don't know if I'd say prefer to deal with discrimination. But what, what Garcia called, she looked at research and she found that a particularly, yes, it's important to acknowledge that racism exists when you're dealing with your children, and it's not a pleasant thing, uh, and that it should be confronted. But what's particularly powerful for, for children is to point at examples of pride. So that could be any of the strengths we just mentioned, but another thing is to point at individuals who have achieved a lot, and that that can be very helpful to children. And in our, in our, bless you. For the test, I just want you to know this, I'm gonna ask you some kind of questions. So this one is not a name, but these people are, are names. I would encourage you to look at the links and what they've achieved. Um, Elson Floyd used to be president here, and now he's in, at University of Washington. Um, but it's, the question will be, which of the following is an example of success in business? And then you wanna pick, be able to pick one of these names, or politics. And you wanna be able to pick one of these. It's limited, and I didn't, bless you. And I encourage you to, to read the links, cause they're interesting. But for the test, all you, all you need to know is, you got a lot of, there's a lot of information you have to remember. Um, and this is what you're gonna need to remember for the test. I would, I would, that's a good point, and I would, I would try to remember that. So, the question was, I, I, I honestly don't know if I asked about that or not in the term test. But do you have to know about John Hope Franklin? So he's, he's a guy who was at Duke University and is a famous historian. Um, but his whole point is you can't understand American or mainstream culture without understanding African-American culture, and you can't understand African-American culture without understanding mainstream culture. So the two cultures are very linked and intertwined. And, uh, I would, I would say, yeah, do you know, do you know that, uh, if you can? Um, uh, cause I don't, I don't really know if, if I asked something about that or not. But I think, I think for sure, if you don't remember, I think it's easy to remember once you, if you read anything about him. But, uh, for sure, you're gonna have to be able to sort your way through these names and, and know. Condoleezza Rice though, I don't think will be on it, cause, cause really you could put her in education or politics. Um, but the other guys, you should, you should know. Any other questions? Thanks for your patience, appreciate it. Thanks for showing up, and, and I hope things go well in your studies.